I want to welcome everybody to today's webinar. I'm Don Wetruba, the Executive Director for M A S B, as most of you know me. And we're gonna flip things up a little or change things up a little bit today. We've spent the last number of meetings talking about those issues important to our members. We will continue to do that. But one of the things that has happened in the past is really sharing between members what you are doing in your individual districts. We will have that opportunity, not anything specific topic wise, but that we will definitely have that as an option. But really today, I have our Legal Counsel Brad Banasik and our Director of Government Relations Jen Smith to spend some time talking about school board meetings and executive orders, kind of where everything stands right now, where things will go if, as those executive orders expire. So giving you an opportunity to really hear from our experts in the field on these topics that are going to be important to you. And I wanted to touch base on one thing before I turn it over to Brad. I don't know how many of you had a chance to listen to, because I think it ran last week, the webinar that we did with, I did with the Executive Directors in the building with Chris Weijin in particular. And towards the end of that webinar, he made a comment about Board Superintendent Communications during this time. And I thought that was kind of worth repeating and going into in a little bit deeper basis. And you're starting to see it in your communities. We probably all feel it ourselves, particularly if you're parents. Like there is definitely a feeling of we don't know what's going to happen in the fall. And I think that's a, that's an, it's an okay feeling to have even if none of us like it. But when it comes to your role as superintendents or board members, as much as that feeling exists for you and you don't know exactly what the plan will be, depending where the government is at on certain things, depending on what you guys come together as a district and plan both budget and delivery of education. But I do think, and Chris said this, the communication between the board and superintendent, and I think it's harder when we're in these virtual settings, has to be more and more often than it has ever been, particularly as it pertains to the district and reopening. I think that it is really important that communication between the superintendent and staff in that same vein is happening regularly. And then as a leadership team, I think you decide how much communication goes out and how often to your community. But I think the worst thing that can happen in this time when there isn't any concrete information is that people start making up it on their, make it up on their own. That's where Chris was coming from. You don't want community members thinking one thing while the superintendent and the board already knows something else or are feeling they're going in a direction. You want your staff to be in the same place as the superintendent and the board. And so I only bring it up to tell, to say to each of you, and as you talk to your peers, it's probably one of the last things on your mind to take on one more thing, particularly if you're the superintendent in this role, while you're trying to figure out budget, while you're trying to figure out what the solutions are going to be. To then add on top of that additional conversations with, you know, regular conversation with the board, with your staff and with your community. But they are all starving for information. And if we can get everybody on the same page, most importantly, the board and the superintendent, I think it prepares districts and your communities and your staff better for the fall to have everybody speaking off the same page of the book, I guess. So I just bring that up. Chris brought it up to me. I hadn't spent a lot of time thinking about it before that. And he's who brought it up. And I've spent some time in the last week since we recorded that, thinking about it more and talking to a few board members and supes on the topic. And knowing that that in the time where we're moving quickly hasn't happened as regularly. And because we're virtual, it's much different. But I do think that it's going to be imperative to be communicating, even if you can't tell your community concrete information. They need to know the kind of discussions that you're having, the different options that are out there, even if one of them may not be the one that you're landing on. So I just bring that up. I put it out there for you. I don't, if you have after, when we get into open comments and questions, and if you have questions or comments, please throw them out there on that. But I would just encourage you to put a plan together on how that communication will happen so that your constituents, both staff wise and in your communities, feel informed about what's happening at the district. I think this is a year where we risk losing families and students to alternatives to public education. And I think communication is one of those ways that we're gonna help keep them around. With that, and Stacy just threw the podcast up a link to it that we did with the four Executive Directors. I am going to turn to Brad Banasik, our Legal Counsel, and have him start talking about, you know, what is the state of the school board meeting today and the executive orders that have put us in that place and kind of where we stand going forward. So Brad, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Well, thanks, Don, and hello to everyone out there today. Really appreciate everyone logging on and joining with us. So as Don mentioned, a lot of confusion has been kind of created between the two executive orders that, my opinion, state whether you can have a in-person school board meeting or not. That's Executive Order 110 and Executive Order 115. But before we get into that discussion, I just wanted to quickly cover the executive order that was issued on Friday. And in my opinion, this did nothing more than just clarify a previous executive order. Executive Order 65 talked about suspending in-person athletic activities until the end of the declaration of emergency or declaration of disaster. Now that is still pending right now. So a lot of folks thought, well, you couldn't have in-person athletic activity on school property because of that. Well, when you read Executive Order throughout, Executive Order 65 throughout, I've always interpreted the meaning that that order generally expires when the school year ends for the specific school district. And that's essentially what Executive Order 120 clarified is that as long as your school year has ended, you know, you can have athletic activities on school property, subject to Executive Order 110 and subject to Executive Order 115. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that after I present the guidance on in-person meetings. So let's talk about school board meetings now. As I mentioned, we have two orders out there that have created quite a bit of confusion as far as whether you can have an in-person meeting or not. First, you have Executive Order 110. This applies to most of the state except for Regions 6 and Region A. I will get into that a little bit more later. So 110 limits any type of social gathering or social event held indoors to 10 individuals. And if an event is held outside, it's limited to 100 individuals. This executive order also states that any work that can be done remotely must be performed remotely. So based upon those two provisions, one, the provision focusing on social gatherings and social events, and the other provision emphasizing that if work must, can be performed remotely, it must be performed remotely. Our interpretation is that Executive Order 110 still requires virtual meetings for school boards outside of Regions 6 and 8. And we, I guess Jen got a little bit of guidance from the Governor's Office on this as well. And that was the opinion that we received from, from their office that because the work can be performed remotely through a virtual meeting, it must be performed remotely through a virtual meeting. And then also a school board meeting isn't a social event or a social gathering. There's actually an exception in the Open Meetings Act that says, you know, a social gathering doesn't apply to the Open Meetings Act. So a board can get together as a quorum for social purposes, and it's not subject to the Act's requirements. So that's 110, in my opinion, requiring in-person meetings. That brings us to Executive Order 115, which was passed about a week and a half ago, or issued about a week and a half ago. This expanded on Executive Order 110 and applies to the Upper Peninsula School Districts and the Northern Michigan County School Districts. And increased the number of individuals who can be present in an indoor social gathering or organized event to 50. And if it's outdoors, it's 250. And there are, in my opinion, there were some significant language changes from 110 to 115 as well. It went from a social gathering and event to terminology, a social gathering or organized event. And I interpret an organized event to be a meeting under the Open Meetings Act. So it's no longer a social event. The way I read Executive Order 115 is an organized event, which I believe can be a meeting under the Open Meetings Act. And then also the language in regard to performing remote work changed as well, stating that if work can be performed remotely, it should be performed remotely, not that it must be performed remotely. So based upon those changes, I interpret 115 to allow school districts in the Upper Peninsula and Northern Michigan to have in-person meetings as long as you're complying with all the other requirements of Executive Order 115, including using social distancing at your, your meetings and requiring some type of face covering at your meetings as well, because Executive Order is clear on that. If you are leaving your residence and you're going to be in an enclosed public space, the executive order requires you to wear a face covering if you're medically able to do so. And then you have the issue of, well, how long can we have virtual meetings? If your board is completely comfortable with having virtual meetings and you don't want to have a virtual meeting at this point, can you continue having virtual meetings? And clearly you can, up to June 30th at this point, right? You know, that's based upon Executive Order 75, which essentially suspended requirements of the Open Meetings Act, allowing for virtual meetings. And that does not expire until June 30th. We have no idea whether that's going to be extended or not. My, my thought is that there's a probably a pretty good chance that it, that will be. And there's always the possibility that the legislature could amend the Open Meetings Act as well to allow for some type of of virtual meetings. Right now, the Open Meetings Act is silent on it. That was the reason that Executive Order 75 had to be issued in order to clarify that you could have a quorum of the board meeting virtually and not be present in a physical location. You know, I actually still interpret the Open Meetings Act as written to allow individual board members to participate and vote remotely as long as you have a quorum physically present. And I know a lot of boards have adopted policies and bylaws to that effect as well. So that generally covers the guidance I wanted to discuss on a meeting virtually, both requirements of having to meet virtually and also being able to meet in person under Executive Order 115. So would be happy to answer any questions now.
I see the first question that's out there, probably one for Jen. M A S B reached out to the Governor's Office about Executive Order 110. Have we asked them any questions about EO 115 and school board meetings?
I believe when it came out, they came to us. They did say under 110 that school board meetings would still have to be virtual. 115, as Brad said, opened it up in the U P in Northern Michigan, farther than the rest of the state and much farther than we had been. So it's my understanding, as Brad said, you can have in-person meetings if you are in a school district that is within one of those two regions and only those two regions, not the rest of the state.
Brad, another question that came to me through the membership end of last week, or maybe it was even yesterday. What's your thought if a district, say that the governor, June 30th, we don't renew and we're back to in-person board meetings? So all the boards now participating in person. Can districts continue to have a portion of the meeting, if they want to be for public participation, be offered virtually? With the expectation, there may be citizens that are wanting to participate but still uncomfortable coming into a larger group setting like a board member, board meeting might be. Do you think the Open Meetings Act would allow for the public participation to be held virtually? And probably as long as they also have that in-person participation allowed?
Yeah, I think the last point you made is significant, Don. Yeah, as long as you're having the ability to, to come to the meeting in person, I think you could allow an accommodation to individuals who are at risk or in the at-risk category in regards COVID-19 and whether it be live streaming or some other process. If they're able to participate in public comment remotely, I don't see anything in the Open Meetings Act. I don't interpret anything in the Open Meetings Act. That would limit that. And I, and because it, it's really up to the individual citizen, which option that that citizen would like to take advantage of, whether it's going to be in-person public comment or the remote virtual public comment. The key is providing the option for the in-person comment as well. And if you, if you provide both, I think clearly that would be in compliance with the Open Meetings Act.
Well, and I would think even, you know, the two regions that have now have the ability to hold the meetings in person may have a likelihood that in this, in the short window that people would still like to participate virtually. And so for them, within this currently open virtual window, it would make sense for them to keep both options available, both participate in person and virtually, particularly while the rest of the state is required to be virtual.
Yeah, and I've essentially been recommending that with the upcoming budget hearings as well. There was quite a bit of uncertainty among boards and school districts. Well, how do we post our upcoming budget hearing? Because as you're aware, in addition to posting that as a meeting under the Open Meetings Act, you have another law that requires you to, to post that in the newspaper of general circulation at least six days prior to the hearing. And in that posting, you're required to post the location of the hearing. And because of the uncertainty of whether the hearing could take place in person or could be done virtually, I was recommending as a best, as a best practice that you post the, the hearing as a virtual meeting. But then if a subsequent executive order opens up the remainder of the state to allow for an in-person public hearing, you, you would still conduct it virtually, but your board members could be present physically according to the executive order that's in, in place at that time. And then that gives your citizens an option, you know, whether they want to come to the meeting in person or to, to access it virtually if they're, you know, uncomfortable coming to the meeting or if they're in an at-risk category.
Brad, I see a question here. It's from Ken Stahl. Prior to COVID, were we prohibited from holding public meetings? Or maybe he meant to say we were, I'm not sure, prohibited from holding public meetings? And maybe, Ken, you need to tell me, I guess it says, were we prohibited from holding public meetings?
Virtually, that's correct. Thanks, Don. Yeah, my question is, is, is there actually already a ruling in place that was prohibiting us from being able to offer the, the both, you know, situation prior to COVID? Or is this, was this just brought up now as a result of COVID? Because I would like to, we don't have cable TV that gets out to our community like some school board members do. And it would be a great way to offer our meetings even after this is over.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Ken. And the Open Meetings Act, you know, how it's written in Michigan is pretty antiquated. There haven't been any updates to it within the last, you know, 20 years or so to kind of embrace remote technology. And the reason that there was some uncertainty about whether you could have board members voting remotely is there, there was a presentation made by the Attorney General's Office last fall where you had an Assistant Attorney General make the comment at a presentation that, you know, if you were not a member of the military, if you weren't called to active service, you could not vote remotely as a board member. And that was a reference to a recent amendment to the Open Meetings Act, which stated that board shall adopt procedures to accommodate a board member who gets called to active military duty. And I believe the A G's office was interpreting that to mean, okay, if the legislature said you, you know, you're required to do these procedures for military members, then no one else can take advantage of these procedures. But I tend to disagree with that. I think because it was a shall and not a should, that still left the door open for other board members to participate remotely. I've always been a proponent that you have to have a quorum physically present. And then if you have a quorum physically present, then there, there, there's the possibility of a board member participating remotely, voting remotely. I think, you know, Executive Order 75, my opinion states that. It does say the Open Meetings Act requires that a meeting of a public body be held in a physical location and requires a physical presence of one or more members of a public body. To me, that's, you know, the Governor's Office saying it's not quite clear whether you have to have it in a physical location or all your members have to be physically present.
And I've talked to the Governor's Office over the last couple of weeks about the OMA law. And prior to this shutdown, I had been talking to Treasury, not, sorry, not Treasury, the Attorney General's Office about that A G that said only the military can, can participate remotely because, as Brad said, that's not how we interpreted it. And so I've been going back and forth with them about their new interpretation. That didn't get settled before all of this happened. Now, in the last couple of weeks, I've been in contact with the Governor's Office about changes, permanent changes to the OMA, going into the statute and making changes. Some of you probably know, we've been working on this physical presence to vote issue for probably four years, if not more, trying to clarify the OMA to say how you can and can't participate remotely. This is certainly brought into the forefront, and now I think we're getting some traction on it. The Governor's Office is putting together their proposed language. We shared what we put together in the past years and said, this is where we're at. This is something we support, and it was something that the locals had supported with us. So we're waiting now to hear back from the Governor's Office to hear what their proposal is, because all I've been told is that their proposal goes farther than ours. So I don't know if the EO will be extended past June 30th, or if they will have something they want to drop on the legislature to pass before June 30th, but we're running out of time for that. So it may be a timing thing for them, but at this point, we don't know exactly what to expect out of the Governor's Office.
Another one, Brad. If we provide remote, the ability for remote comment during the current period, would that set up a precedent to require it going forward when we're on the other side of the COVID pandemic?
That's a good question. I don't think so unless that's written, you know, into any legislative amendment. And quick conversation with, with Jen, and I'm not sure if I would, you know, be completely agreeable to a law that required the district to allow for, you know, remote public participation. I think that should be a local decision if a board wanted to do that. But if, you know, if the Open Meetings Act was amended to require that, I know a lot of districts are a bit uncomfortable with that process. You know, I, I think it should be a decision that board should be able to make via policy. But I don't believe you're setting a precedent by doing it now, no.
Well, and I think, Brad, you're answering that from a legal perspective. I think, you know, always when you've set up a first, you know, something as it relates to your community where you've created a venue for them, however it is, whether it's a board meeting or something else, for public comment, and it becomes a part of practice, you may not have a legal problem with ending it, but then you would, you may have a communications issue with your own community, wondering why you've brought that practice to an end, if you want to end it at some certain point in the future. A question from Barbara Reed from Dexter. What is M A S B's view on remote voting? And I know you touched on it a little bit, Brad, but.
Oh, and man, I'll defer to Jen on this. I, I don't know if we adopted a resolution on this, but I, I think the more flexibility boards have on this issue, the better.
And the language that we put together in the bill that we've been pushing, where it came from is originally, there was a bill that would ban any remote participation in a meeting, period. And we pushed back on that really hard, as did the cities, townships, counties, a bunch of other boards. The final draft that we came down to that we had supported said that the board shall create a policy for remote voting, which would leave it to your board, whether or not you wanted to allow it or not. It would require that you had a quorum physically present and that there is a stated reason for the remote voting that the board had adopted. It also went on to say you could own, the board's policy could also say how many meetings you could participate in remotely. So if they wanted to cap how many meetings you could participate in or vote in, a board could do that. But it was basically to allow the board to establish a policy to allow for remote voting. And once that policy was established, then they had to follow it. And then the law only stipulated that there must be a quorum, there must be a reason, and that you may limit the meetings.
Brad, somebody threw me a question through private message. It might have meant to send it out to everyone. You, you touched on this, but as we talk about the idea of allowing future public participation virtually, somebody actually brings up ADA accommodations so that if a person actually had an accommodation they needed to meet, the district would in fact be obligated to provide it if they made that request under an ADA disability. And is that correct?
Yeah, that, that is correct. You know, anytime a board has a public meeting, whether if it's done in person or virtually, you have to provide notice that if someone needs accommodation in order to actively participate in that meeting, whether it be just being a listening participant or someone who act, who want, wishes to actively engage in public comment, you're required to accommodate the disability. And if accommodating it through virtual means is, is the best way to, to do that, yeah, I would agree. That probably would be required by the ADA.
Okay. I see another question, and I, I've participated in them, so I know the answer already. But could an in-person school board meeting be held off of school property?
Well, again, if, if you're in Regions 6 and 8, I would say yes, you can have an in-person school board meeting held off of school property. You want to be careful, though, if it, if it's held outside of the district, you know, at, at a location that makes it inaccessible to your community members, you know, then you're disenfranchising those folks, and that would not be in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. However, for under, under 110 and for all the other school districts outside and Region 8, the fact that you're holding it off of school property doesn't matter. It's, the issue is, it's, it's not a social gathering, it's a public meeting. And under 110, you're unable to have a public meeting right now, whether it's held on school property or off of school property.
And Brad, I'm not sure, you know, I'm going to look back to, you know, private, prior to COVID. So, and I'm not sure the direction, maybe you answered it based on what she, what this person was thinking. But I can remember, we have a number of districts that we've actually done work with that during the course of a year, and you see it more often in the summer than during the regular course of a school year, where they may decide, just because of the nature of the meeting, they're going to do a board retreat, for example, and they do it at a, you know, some kind of meeting place within the district rather than in a school building, just for kind of a change of venue. They post it as a public meeting, you know, they allow public participation, but they just hold it at a site that's not the school district because, you know, they just feel that's, you know, that makes sense for that. You know, if we're doing strategic planning with a district, we see them do that sometimes.
Yeah, so we're, as you mentioned, retreats are, are subject to the, to the Open Meetings Act. And as long as it's held within the district, no issue, as long as it's, it's at a location that where folks can access the meeting. If you, you know, go outside of the district, there's an Attorney General opinion stating that if it's an unreasonable distance, that doesn't comply with the Open Meetings Act. The, the A G opinion doesn't get into detail what constitutes reasonable distance or unreasonable distance. I've always told folks I wouldn't go more than 15 to 30 minutes outside of the district. I think if you go beyond a half hour outside of the district, really makes it difficult for your community members to attend that session. But yeah, a retreat is a meeting under the Open Meetings Act. You're going to have a quorum present there. But yeah, a retreat is a meeting under the Open Meetings Act. You're going to have a quorum present there. Even though you may not be making any decisions at a retreat, you're still deliberating as a quorum of the board on issues that you're likely going to be deciding on at future business meetings.
So Brad, this is one I know that you and I just kind of dealt with locally here, something along these lines. If there is a closed meeting, which would be allowed by statute, for example, superintendent evaluation of personnel issues, um, can this be done in person or does one ten prohibit that?
I would say, still say that if you're outside of region six and eight, um, it, it has to be done in, in person. Um, executive order seventy-five doesn't remove the requirement that a closed meeting must take place during an open meeting. So you, you automatically just can't meet in closed session. You have to be in that closed meeting first, uh, and then while you're in that closed meeting, you vote to go into closed session. So in this case, going into closed session evaluates a superintendent as requested by the superintendent, takes a vote of the board to do that, and you can only vote in an open meeting. So that would have to be done in person if, if you're outside of regions six and eight, uh, as of today, in my opinion.
And, and Brad and I just dealt with this. We had a local district that on top of it did a special meeting and then really was only planning on having closed session and still needed to have, you know, the Brad's view was consistent with what he just said. They need to call, post an open meeting, still have open comment, period. Then go into closed session if that was the request of the superintendent for evaluation. Um, but you have to run it like an open meeting, uh, which would therefore mean you're going to have it, you know, virtually under the current executive orders.
Yeah, and, and if you haven't had an op, uh, excuse me, a closed meeting, um, virtually yet, that, that can be a bit tricky. Um, I know in some cases, the, the, uh, boards that are using Zoom, um, have maybe created a breakout room for the closed session. And thus you're just designating the board members to go into that breakout room for the closed session. And, and then, you know, maybe you put up a slide, uh, that everyone else can access stating that the board is currently in closed session. And then you convene out a closed session back in, into the open session. Another way would be just doing a closed session by phone, uh, a phone conference rather than by video conference. That would kind of constitute a, you know, a, a separate meeting, but still part of that, that open meeting. So there's a number of ways you could do it. Um, you know, if anybody has any questions about that, they can, they can contact me directly.
Well, I'd like to, you know, Jen, do you have anything just in general from an update perspective that you think is worth sharing at this point? Um, and I see another question just got posted, but will I, I still ask you first if you have anything that you feel is hanging out there that, the, from a legislative perspective, that's worth noting?
Um, I wish I had an update. I know you all want to know what's going on with budget and I've got nothing. Um, there is a million rumors floating around. And unfortunately, some of them are saying there's not going to be a cut this year, but we don't know how they could do that. Budget has to be balanced by September thirtieth. Um, but here we are, middle of June, you're trying to settle your books for this year and pass a budget for next year. And unfortunately, I have absolutely no new news to share with you. So I guess that's better than usual where I always have bad news. I have news, but I wish I had an update and I really don't. Um, the only other thing would be, as I said earlier, um, talking to the governor's office, they're not sure if they're going to extend the June thirtieth O M A E O or not. I think part of it is going with her opening up more sections of the state. And what we've heard her say is that she may look at opening up more sections downstate before July fourth. Um, so it could be partly caught up in that, but we haven't gotten a feel for that either. So no, I have no update.
And Jen, that, just a clarification for me, you said, you know, the rumors that are circulating that there might be, there's rumors that there would be no cuts this year, meaning the current school year, not, that they're still for sure talking cuts for the budgets that districts are about to pass or have passed.
They have to.
Yes. That, I, I figured that. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any confusion.
Yeah. So they're talking, the rumor that's going around is that there won't be cuts for this fiscal year for schools. So for the state, that's through September thirtieth. Um, I think that the hope and the prayer is that the feds come through, but we don't know if the feds will come through until probably July. So we don't know if the money will be there, which is why I think that it's dangerous to hear those rumors and believe them. Um, but we haven't seen any sort of indication as what they'll do. But if they don't make any cuts this year, they're going to have to make drastic cuts for the next fiscal year, which for you starts July one, but for the state starts October one. And so we're stuck in that weird time lapse again, where the state is going to drag this out because they're waiting on real numbers and real revenue, um, federal action, all of these things. The state could drag this out until the last week of September. Uh, and we're just, we're trying to pull all the information we can, but just don't have anything good.
So Brad, I'm going to, you know, if you saw, there's a question, I'm going to ask one in, in advance of it because I think it's relevant. So we talked about the A D A earlier.
Mm-hmm.
And the requirement to provide access if there's an A D A, you know, request.
Issue, yep.
Under COVID, um, if somebody simply said, I am at a greater health, health risk, um, be, you know, of catching COVID because of, you know, whatever health condition that they have, does that technically qualify as an A D A issue?
That's a great question. Yeah. And, you know, after I, we had our previous discussion on this, I started thinking through that and, um, unless one of the, the underlying risks i- is, is a disability under A D A, the fact that, you know, if you're, you know, seventy-five-year-old, seventy-five-years-old and more accessible, you know, to COVID nineteen, then that doesn't make you, uh, you know, qualify that as having a disability under A D A. Um, so, yeah, it would have to be one of the, you know, a disability making you more of a risk. And then, um, you would have to accommodate that, that disability.
Yeah, okay.
You know.
So district could choose to do it, but it may not be required because the question that actually was posted is would providing internet service be a requirement for satisfying the accommodations for a ver, for a virtual meeting? But that would have to be then tied very specifically to the disability.
Disability, yep. And, and the fact that you're just at risk because of an elderly age. Uh, I, I don't see that as being, you know, having a disability under A D A. Thus you wouldn't have to, to make a combination for that. But as you, you indicated earlier, you know, sometimes you have to go beyond, you know, the legal liability, the legal significance and look at it from, you know, a, a, a policy perspective and what's, what's the best policy. And, you know, if you think you, you want to give as much access to your meetings as, as possible, uh, then, you know, having that virtual access, you know, may be a, a, a good option for your, your school board.
Uh, question from Barbara, would we have any risk from a district related to age discrimination? If, uh, you have somebody that's over age sixty-five, which is the, of course, the health risk cutoff that people have talked about?
I, I don't believe so. I mean, generally, you know, age discrimination is, is put that in the context of, of employment. Not sure if, um, you know, that would really be an issue in terms of accommodating someone for, for a public meeting.
Uh, this question I think goes to Jen. Um, Jeff Brown says, so no update on changes to the watch list?
Um, we've been in touch with Treasury and they are not inclined to waive that this year. They said that it would, if anything, they would want to know those districts that are going to be struggling. Our argument back to them is that this isn't through, the idea of early warning was to catch those districts that were not budgeting, that were, um, maybe their budgets were off or over projected or things like that. Not something that the state has created when we cut funding. Um, and trying to make them understand just how many districts this means for them. Because at the end of the day, you're going to have one report, they're going to have hundreds. So we're still talking to them about it, but at this point, um, probably two, three weeks ago, I think I got last word from Treasury, they were disinclined to suspend that, but the conversations aren't done yet.
And also for those, in, in that same vein, uh, we sent out an email to board members yesterday or the day before. I can't remember, Stacy, could tell me when. Um, we are doing a joint webinar with M D E, Treasury, M A S A, M S B O, uh, ourselves uh, tomorrow at one o'clock, I believe, Stacy, yes? Um, and, um, that is one of the questions that I am posing to them, uh, during the webinar to have them address. Um, I have talked to the new director that oversees that section. Um, she is, as Jen said, out of mind that, um, at least that they, they would, they want to move in that direction to be able to know who's out there. Um, you know, what that looks like as far as intervention or plans of action, um, might, you know, within the law, what, you know, whatever flexibility they're allowed, um, they might have to take advantage of that. But right now they're staying in that place. If you tune into that webinar tomorrow, and that webinar is very broad, they're going to let, there's finance questions that might be related to M D E, there's borrowing questions that could be related to, uh, Treasury along with the early warning list. So a lot of that is, um, could be answered tomorrow in that, in that format. Um, Eric just asked, Eric John asked about the link for tomorrow. Stacy just posted it. Um, and you do have to register for it. We are not hosting this, so it is a registration through Eventbrite. Uh, and, uh, make sure you go through that, otherwise you will not be able to participate tomorrow. Um, let's see, sign up for tomorrow's webinar so far and I haven't received any information about how to connect. Um, do you have any insights? Our understanding is, um, that they are going to be sending connection information out to people. Um, I am actually meeting with them at one thirty today to do a walkthrough. So, um, I will make sure that I get that clarified and that they do, you know, if they haven't been going out automatically, that somehow they reach out to everybody, um, in that space. I'm just writing that down, um. Yeah, Jen points out, it might come out tomorrow morning, some of the webinars, wait until the day, uh, day of to send that information. Um, I'm trying to see if we missed anything in other questions, um. I don't see any. I will have, right when we get to the end, as people came in, we started with a hundred people, we're now at about a hundred and twenty-five. Um, that I'll have Brad do a quick recap on, like, the, just initial statements on the open, you know, the meeting related to region six and eight and, um, the rest of the state sort of thing as we finish up. But I will say, you know, we're, we've got about fifteen minutes less, left, I'm sorry. General questions on, uh, things that you've been hearing about, whether it be legislatively, we've got experts on with us. Um, so legislatively, other legal questions, um, other thoughts related to kind of M A S B. Um, I was, I did a, a county association meeting virtually, uh, last week. Um, one of the things I asked them, and I'd be interested, you don't, you can type it in feedback or you can, you know, say that you'd like to speak. Um, by now, I think you've probably all received some sort of notification from M A S B, um, that we made the, what I consider the tough decision, uh, to move our annual conference scheduled in November to a virtual format for this year. Uh, we really felt that we were in a space that, um, because of the uncertainty of the fall, because of our concern for, uh, members' kind of health and safety and bringing together eight hundred people and then sending you all back out to the corners of the states that you come from, created risk, uh, that we just, uh, and we, and, and I think importantly, wanted to keep the quality of the event, what you have come to expect when you participate. And we couldn't wait until September to find out that, oh, it's canceled and we're going to have to go virtual. We needed to do it early. Uh, so we made that decisions, we've published it early, we're looking as staff, what the, what it's going to look like, how are we going to deliver it? Do we need, you know, software? And so I, I am interested, um, you know, for good or bad, and, uh, just what you, what your thoughts are on having it moved to a virtual. And of course, the other piece for it and recognizing the budget concerns for all of you this year. Um, we've also decided to make that event free of charge. Uh, you know, part of that was budgetary for all of you and part of it for us was, uh, we want more members to participate. And if for whatever reason they haven't participated in the past, um, because of cost, because of distance, uh, we want to show them a great event and, uh, uh, you know, a year and a half from now, when we hopefully are back in person, uh, we can increase our numbers because people see the value of it and are willing to come and do that. So, um, I just throw that out to all of you. I do see we've received some other posts. Um, everybody is saying, or not everybody, many are saying they did get their confirmation in the email, um, from Eventbrite. So you may either want to check your junk mail or scroll to the bottom of the email. It does seem like the actual link is on there. Uh, James Fish says, any information on when we will hear from the governor's task force on guidelines for returning to school in the fall? Jen?
We have been told that that task force is going to be meeting a lot this month. The advisory council is going to meet this month. Um, they will have recommendations to the task force by the end of the month and that we should be seeing or hearing those recommendations by early July. I don't know beyond that. Um, the council has been told that their work is to be done amongst themselves. Um, so they brought in these people from all over the state and different parts of education to have these conversations, to inform the task force. But I don't know that we will see anything ahead of time either that we could weigh in on, um, but we think it will go public the beginning of July.
Jen, another one directed at you, uh, and I know that you've been in conversations. Have you heard anything concrete from N S B A related to the advocacy conference that would happen in late January, early February?
No, this just came up in our last meeting. Um, we talk with the federal advocacy folks every other week. Uh, and last week we talked to them, they said that they're in conversations about advocacy institute and what to do with it. Um, they have canceled all in-person meetings between now and the end of this year, the end of twenty twenty. Um, but they haven't made a decision on that event yet, um, but are having internal conversations.
Jeff, uh, posted, we are seeing, starting to see email that appear to be organized and similar in content saying opening up in the fall is necessary and warranted and are others. I've heard from another, number of board members and superintendents, um, both in that space where they're saying it's, you know, opening up is necessary and warranted. Some of those provide, um, you know, some reference to medical document or, you know, medical experts saying that the, the risks are low. Um, we've also seen ones that, uh, talk about, um, not wearing masks because they're medically unnecessary and maybe cause problems. Um, not to, to diminish those that are, you know, individuals that really believe that and are sending it, but it does seem like based on the number of districts, anecdotally, that at least I've heard from, that it's more of a concerted effort, um, to spread the message. And a lot of the message do look similar as Jeff points out. Uh, Jen, do you believe the back to school committee will end up being guidelines or turn into an E A? Or E O, I'm sorry. Um, and, um, maybe even legislation would be another option. Then any sense on what the gov, the governor thinks this committee result will end up as?
Our hope is that it's not legislation. We want the state to stay, we want the legislature to stay out of how schools open in the fall because it may look different for different schools. Um, it's going to depend on your population, it's going to depend on where you are located. Um, there's so many things that go into opening your schools, you know. So we would rather the legislature just stay out of it, but as we know, they can't always stay out of it. Um, I don't know if it will come out. I think it will come out just as recommendations. And the governor will post these, if this is what you should be looking at. Um, I don't think it will come out as an E O, but at this point, we just don't know.
No.
I do say, you know, and I, I don't think, other states have issued some guidelines already, um, not completely about back to school, but in this space, um, and they have been just that as guidelines. But a lot of that plays into politics and so it's hard to know what one state will do in their politics versus here. Um, and Jen mentioned legislation. Um, while there, we don't want legislation related to returning to school, we may be as an organization or education organizations, asking the legislature to address certain problems and roadblocks to school in the fall, you know, with legislation. So there are really two separate pieces to that.
Yeah, that should be more clear. We don't want them to legislate how you reopen, but we are, and we'll know more once we see these recommendations, but there are laws that were suspended through the E O, uh, through E O thirty-five and sixty-five so that you could do virtual learning, remote learning. so that you could do virtual learning, remote learning, distance learning, whatever the title is, that we may still want to see suspended in the fall. We have not put that list together yet. We are working with our counterparts, with all of the other education organizations to sort of talk it through. The only thing we are asking for currently, our budget-related, and that is to suspend the 75% attendance, which under... Never mind. Wrong thought. So to suspend the 75% attendance, so that in the fall, if you have kids that aren't comfortable coming back to school or you do some sort of hybrid, we don't know what it's going to look like. We don't want you to have to have 75% attendance to count the day. So we're working on getting that waived in the budget for next year as well as pupil count and allowing districts to use last October's pupil count instead of this October's pupil count to give them some stability in budgeting. We're getting traction on both of those things, but without a budget, we don't know for sure that it's going to be in there. But those two things we are talking about right now, the list of other things that were waived, we're putting it together and we're thinking it through. So if there are ideas that you have, please let me know. But it's not anything that we're going to approach the legislature with until we have a budget set. We need to get that set first.
A few people.
Just to mention, I've been tracking some of these parent emails, and you may have seen it, is the CDC guidelines on returning to school. And what's happened, I know I've seen it on my social media. They've taken the CDC guidelines, which are actually pages, and they bullet pointed them. And they're pushing them out over social media to say, this is what school is going to look like. And I think that is driving some parents to say, you know, they're not comfortable with it or this goes too far, whatever the case may be. We have been urging people to sort of back off those CDC talking points because it's not the whole picture. And we don't know what to look at for Michigan yet. But that, I know that that's driving some parents to say, is this what you're going to do? And why can't you tell me how many masks they're going to have to wear and how many kids in the classroom? But that sort of blew up in the last few weeks. I think it's calmed down a little, but I do know it's driving some parent traffic to school boards.
Well, and I think that is part of the reason when I started at the beginning of this webinar is the more that your district, even if you don't know the answers yet, the more that you can communicate with your public and your parents and your staff, the more that you can help to push away these, you know, social media posts and other things that, at least you're combating with the information that you have. And they can't say, "Well, I heard the district is doing this," or "I heard..." You know, have a, have a statement and say, "We don't know yet. Here are things we're considering." But I think that communication can help in that space. We've had a number of people post on the conference positively being virtual, so I appreciate that. One did ask for some specifics on this. So our plan right now, and we're still looking at this, you know, we do not plan on, you know, changing or diminishing this conference. You know, our thought is that we will still, I think normally in a course of a conference, we do 45 clinic sessions. I think you get to choose from three of those as the breakouts happen. Our thought right now, and this is going to depend on the software that we use to deliver the conference, is that, one, that we hope to be able to record the whole conference or most of it, thus giving you access to all of the clinic sessions rather than just the three that you would have been able to see in person. So you actually could get, you know, more information, more training than you would normally get. As far as online courses, meaning our CBA classes that we typically wrap around the conference, those will be offered either in instructor-led or completely virtual. Separate from the conference, we will, just as we've been offering online classes this summer, there will still be the 90, I think it's a $95 charge for a CBA class. So if you're taking more on conference, that piece will still be there. The conference itself, that registration is the piece that will be free. And, you know, we already were moving in a, in a place where the 100 levels were available online. We're now doing more, I think both Brad and Jen have taught some online, or their, you know, and virtue, I shouldn't say online, virtual instructing. That is going to continue into the future and, and grow. We've staffed up in that space to have a course designer on our staff that's actually going to work on developing more of that. So we will see expansion. It's not going to take the place of face-to-face learning and training. But we definitely understand that our members, regardless of COVID or anything else, that are busy and don't have the time but still want the training and the knowledge. And so we will continue as we move forward with expansion in online offerings and virtual offerings as it relates to training for MAS-B. Kind of a legal question, I guess, Brad, and it might be the last one because it's 12:57. If the, if the governor's council makes a recommendation or guidelines for how school reopens, the liability goes back on the school district. That's, that's the question.
That's, that's a great question, Ken, because you look at it in the context of governmental immunity. Generally, you know, school boards, school districts are going to be protected under governmental immunity as long as they are acting within the scope of their authority and acting pursuant to law. But if you have guidance out there issued by an executive agency and you don't follow that guidance, I think someone could argue, you're not acting within the scope of your authority. And then you may be waiving your governmental immunity if you, if you don't follow that guidance. So, yeah, that's a great question. And, yeah, we would probably see some court cases as a result of that establishing precedent.
So with that feeling, Brad, I mean, whether it's going to be, we'll see what the recommendations are. If that is a risk, we would be in a situation where we would likely be, if they're, if they are in fact guidelines, we would likely be recommending to districts to follow the guidelines or at least consult with their local legal counsel if they were going to stray away from those guidelines.
I think so. In order to keep your governmental immunity, there certainly would be a risk that you would be waiving your immunity if you acted outside of the guidelines.
I had a private message that asked who was on the governor's advisory committee from MAS-B. We did not specifically as an organization get to appoint somebody. They did have a school board member, and Jennifer, if I remember correctly, a school board member from Okemos is on it.
A member from Okemos representing school boards. And then the woman who's representing parents is also a school board member and from the county. And then one of the people representing teachers is a former school board member. So that's as close as we got. They weren't really taking organizational people. They wanted those that were truly serving in those calls. So we don't have, MAS-B does not have a formal place on that advisory council.
And Brad, we're now at, right at almost 1 o'clock. So if you could just do a quick recap for those that joined late on your guidance related to the EOs and whether they can have a virtual or an in-person meeting or not and what the requirements are for that, and then we can wrap it up.
Sure. So under 115, if you're a school district in the upper peninsula or in a northern Michigan county, I interpret that order to allow for an in-person meeting. Obviously, if you have that meeting, practice social gathering and follow the requirements of having a face covering. All other school districts outside of the UP and outside of Northern Michigan still subject to Executive Order 110, which I interpret as requiring virtual meetings, not allowing in-person meetings. And this, continue to look at our COVID-19 webpage on the MAS-B website. I've been updating that continually with Stacy Bogard. I didn't include an update for 115 as I thought that would create too much confusion. So right now, if you're in one of those districts outside of region eight or six, that information on there, you know, specifically applies to your school district.
All right. Well, Jen, Brad, thank you both very much for being on today and sharing so much with our members. I'll stay, thank Stacy Bogard for putting this together again, as she has for the last number that we've done since the beginning. I believe, Stacy, we're now at a place, we don't have a future one scheduled from two weeks from now. Am I correct in that first?
That is correct.
And we're having conversations as we get into the summer. Hopefully, we'll all be able to enjoy parts of the summer. We have, it seems, we've had good participation each of the weeks that we've done this with somewhere between a 50, 50 to 100 and now 125 today. I do think we're going to probably stick with the webinar format for those members that are interested, even going forward and outside of the COVID space. But we may take some time off during the summer to kind of really think about what this looks like. And, and it might be that we alternate and bring in experts. Maybe there's a webinar where, you know, once a month you see Brad or once a month you see Jen or, you know, we don't know that yet. So it's a format that people like. We're going to keep it around. And, but we will be likely taking some time off as we get a little deeper into the summer. Thank you for all, all for participating and I hope that you have a great afternoon. If you can get out and enjoy the weather, please do. And it looks like all week, we're going to see some sunshine. So unusual for Michigan. Thank you all for being here today and thank you all for serving your districts in the capacity that you do.